Good evening and welcome to the January 14th, 2025 Foxborough School Committee meeting. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access Network. School Committee members Sarah Ladani and Rob Canfield are unable to join us this evening. So we are going to start right off with the first agenda item, and that is open public comments, and I do not believe there are any open public comments tonight. So we're going to move right on to the approval of minutes. In our packet, we have five minutes to approve, and they are from, all from the Policy Subcommittee.
Thank you, and apologies for having so many.
Thank you for getting them done.
Well, thank you to, thank you to everybody who helped. All right. First up, I move to approve the July 24th, 2024 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Ruder and a second by Mr. Erman. Any questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
All in favor? All against? Approved, 3-0-0.
And then we met the next day, July 20th. I moved that we approve the July 25th, 2024 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ruder, second by Mr. Erman. Any questions or comments about the meeting minutes? All approved? I mean, all in favor? All against? Minutes are approved, 3-0-0.
Thank you. Those were our planning meetings to figure out how we were going to do it. Next, now we've got into the nitty-gritty of doing the policy stuff. I move to approve the October 23rd, 2024 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Ruder, second by Mr. Erman. Any questions or comments about the minutes? All in favor? All against? Approved, 3-0-0.
Then next, I think one with many policies on it. I move to approve the November 20th, 2024 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Ruder, a second by Mr. Erman. Do we have any questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Hi.
All against? Approved, 3-0-0.
Thank you. And lastly, bringing this up to date, I move to approve the December 18th, 2024 Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Ruder, a second by Mr. Erman. Any questions or comments about the minutes? All in favor? All against? Approved, 3-0-0. Okay, up next on our agenda, we have the superintendent update with Dr. Amy Burdos.
All right. So first of all, I'd like to congratulate our students that just competed recently for DECA. We had 40 students that competed and I think 11 that had placed that will be moving on to state, so congratulations to them, which is always exciting. They really, they really show what we're able to do in Foxborough, and they have a great showing every year, so congratulations to them. Couple of upcoming events that we have were the Grade 7 Concert that's coming up on January 16th, and then there's no school, in case anybody needs to know, on Monday, the 20th, as far as the Martin Luther King holiday. Kindergarten registration is taking place. There is a time to reach out, if you have a kindergartner that's going to be five by August 31st, to complete the registration. The sooner that that's done, the better it is for us and planning. So you'll continue to hear that from us and the community update and the QR code and everything else to try to get folks out there to register their kindergarteners. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was our hosting of Screenagers that's coming up on January 23rd. So far, we have registration that is going to be, we have 106 people that have registered so far. Childcare that's going to be provided in partnership with the YMCA. We have about 30 children so far, as far as the games and things that are going to be taking place in the gym with the Y. Our food service will be providing dinner that evening, and with those numbers, based on the auditorium for the movie screening, we're able to open that up to the other Hockamok Y area school districts. So we've sent that out today, and the Y will be really advertising that as well. That is just for the screening portion, which is at 6:00 on that evening, and they'll be able to join us in the auditorium for the Q and A for the movie screening and then the Q and A afterwards. And that is a film that I think that there will be a lot of takeaways for parents, educators, and then it is also appropriate for our upper elementary age students, ages nine to 13, to even watch the film if they so choose as well.
Nice.
And the last thing that I wanted to mention is, we've talked a lot here about our plan for success and that that is sunsetting in June, and our new strategic planning process will begin taking place very soon. A letter will be going out to all family and community members. This week, we'll be asking for family and community members to participate on that team, which will be approximately 25 to 30 people. We will start that work with focus groups. We'll have focus groups at the middle school and the high school. We'll have focus groups with community, with parents, and then teachers as well. The survey that will go out for that, if you're not able to participate in a focus group and you're wanting to still provide input, you'll be able to do that through a survey. We'll be meeting starting in February. The dates will be in the communication that will go out. It is something, if we have community or family members that are part of that team, you need to be able to commit to all of those dates. They will be taking place during the school day, so we know that that might limit some from participating, but that, again, is why we're going to have the focus groups, which that will take place in the evening. We're planning that to where it's an hour prior to one of the concerts at the high school, hoping that we can get more folks out to participate in that focus group, and then they can go to the concert afterwards. So again, stay tuned. More information, a lengthy communication will be coming out this week regarding that with the specific dates. So it's a really important process for us as we look forward to the future and the excellent education that we provide here in Foxborough and what that looks like moving forward. So watch for that communication, and if you haven't signed up to participate in the movie screening on January 23rd, go back, sign up, register. The more that we have, the greater the conversation after the screening.
Great. Do we have any questions or comments on the superintendent update?
No. Thank you for putting it together.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Burdos. Up next, we have you. We have an update from the School Committee Student Representatives, Jasmine Bogosa and Stevie Strong.
Oh, sorry. We do have mid-terms next week. Everyone is cramming in and doing everything this week to get ready for mid-terms. Also, the term ends on Friday.
It does.
Our last thing is just that the Jazz at the high school is having a fundraiser on Friday at Fab Fines right on the Common. I'm not sure exactly what the fundraiser is, but it's being hosted there. I'm assuming that it's part of the, part of, or all of the proceeds will be going to the Jazz group here at the high school. So yeah, that is all that we have for today.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have the Community Report with Dr. Stephanie Burrows.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm very excited for this year's Community Report. I used a different platform to put the report together this year, so I tried some new graphics and features, and I'm excited about those. For those of you that are new to the committee, the Community Report is something that we compile every year around this time. It gets mailed out to every resident in the town of Foxborough, so it's not just Foxborough Public Schools, Foxborough Public School Homes that are receiving this communication. So it's a way for us to share with the community the things that we're working on in our public schools and where those taxpayer dollars are going. What you'll notice with this year's report is the front cover in particular looks a little different. That is in part because we have a new vision of a graduate. If you remember from last year's report, we had the Portrait of a Graduate on the front cover of that. Now that we've gone through the NEASC accreditation process, we now have a new graphic for the vision of a graduate. Some other things that are featured in this year's report, as Dr. Burdos had mentioned, we're using this as an opportunity to advertise kindergarten registrations. So there is a QR code in the report that families can access and go directly to student registration for the 2526 school year. Another new feature to this year's report is we grabbed some of the quotes from the students' parents and teachers from our Culture and Climate Survey. Really, the hope is that the teachers, the students and the parents that are participating in the survey might see some quotes in there and know that we're looking at that data and maybe be more encouraged to give us feedback when that comes out in the spring, and also to showcase some of the wonderful things that our, that our students and teachers are saying about Foxborough Public Schools. We included a couple of data pieces in here. They are consistent with what we've included in the past, and also there is a second QR code for, if you remember last school committee meeting, we had mentioned the video that Dr. Donovan had put on the high school website for our NEASC visit. We did, we created a QR code for that so that more folks in the community that might not visit the school website often have an opportunity to, to hear about what's happening at the high school and what we're proud of.
That's great.
And this is just an opportunity for feedback. If there's any pieces of information in there that's unclear or any data that you would like to see added, we can make those adjustments before we mail it out. So I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Do we have any questions or comments on this?
Nope. I think it looks very good, and we know you put a lot of time into it, so thank you.
No, and I appreciate you taking past feedback and weaving that into. It's evident that you, that you and everybody that touches this thing cares a lot about it, so thank you for that, Dr. Burrows.
No, I think it looks terrific, and I do appreciate how you're constantly evolving it and pulling, trying to engage the parents and students more. I think it looks great. Great. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you, Dr. Burrows. So up next, we have the continuation of the discussion of the proposed FY26 budget with Dr. Burdos, the School Business Administrator, Manager, Ms. Karen Sheridan, and the Director of Student Service, Mr. Corey Michaelazek.
All right. So since our last meeting, when we did the full presentation, we've continued with the Budget Subcommittee Meetings that are taking place, and we continue to have conversations with the town. So this evening, it's about coming back for any additional questions or discussion or information requests that you have. The 3.5 budget presentation number that we presented at the last meeting, since that time, the town had come back to us and had said, so if you might recall, they had said a 3%, increase on our budget.
Yes.
We could not make that work. In order to keep all of our existing programs for students and staffing, and the budget we presented to you was a 3.5% increase. The town then came back and asked us to reduce that to 3.25, and in that discussion, we had the ask for a special education reserve account to be added. We are very fortunate in that the town is amenable to that and to set up this special ed reserve account. Mr. Michaelazek is here this evening. We'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but then more specific questions on special education that we have, he's here to answer those questions if there are some. And then that 3.25%, which would have been a decrease from what we presented, just yesterday, the town came back and said that they would be able to, we'll be able to go with the 3.5. So we were relieved to hear that.
Yes.
So that is something that we are very thankful that they saw, based on all of our needs that we presented, that they heard us on that, and at the same time with the special education piece, because as we talked about it the last time, that increase alone because of costs that are out of our control with out-of-district placements, it would completely blow up the budget without having that. So we're very fortunate that they're amenable to that, and I will pass it over to Karen, and she can talk about any other specifics before we get into questions about special education as far as the, the town with the 3.5.
Okay. A couple of things. I just want to make sure that people are aware that, so in order to stay at level funded, I mean, level service, this is the 3.5 that we asked for. So like Superintendent said, we're extremely happy and appreciative that we now are able to stay at that 3.5 to go into the school committee on the next school committee meeting. On that Special Ed Stabilization Fund, so we had asked for it at 914, 946, which would cover the overage that we have, we had in the out-of-district in order to stay at 3.5. The town is going to be putting it on, putting it out at $950,000. So just so that people are aware, with this Special Education Stabilization Fund, it requires two votes at town meeting. So the first vote would be to set up that stabilization fund, and the second vote would be to transfer that money from the free cash into the stabilization fund. Once the fund is set up, then any money that is not used in that stabilization fund does remain in the fund. So you're only allowed to use that for the special education cost expenditures. The rest would remain in that fund. So it can roll over. They did, I did talk with Marie, the Director of Finance, and they are going to be going with that Special Education Stabilization Fund that we spoke about at the first meeting that we had with budget, and that was the one that you can have 2% of your net school spending in there. That's the cap that you could have in that, and that's $1,789,900 at the moment. And the other thing with that is it would require a school committee, if they want to add to that fund in the future, after it's set up, school committee vote. So say at the end of a fiscal year, you have a little bit of money left over, you want to transfer it to special ed, to the Special Education Stabilization, the school committee would do that. But then when we want to utilize this money for any of the expenditures, it would require a vote of school committee and of the town.
And of the town.
It's usually a very simple process. You just bring it to both, which is like a simple memo of what you're going to be expending, and it's usually a pretty simple process with that. But that's how that stabilization fund will work, so that money will stay. Great. Very appreciative to the town for that. So I don't have any more unless somebody has any questions on it.
And related to that, just to be clear, for that to come into being, we need to, the town, needs to vote that in at town meeting.
Town has to, yep. It's a town meeting vote, that's why I say.
Show up.
It requires two votes, so everybody show up.
Yes.
Because if that doesn't pass, then.
Then it eats our lunch.
Yeah. Then we'll be looking at 914, 946.
Right.
So it's really important to come to town meeting and.
Yeah. I appreciate it. And for anybody who, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
For anybody who missed the previous meeting, the elegance of this idea is probably how we should have, how, you know, would have been great to have this idea in the past, because as special ed funding that we're mandated to pay fluctuates, it really can wreak, it's the one thing that we haven't ever been able to plan for, and it wreaks havoc on our budget. And it has the potential to impact programs, you know, definitely impact staffing and all sorts of things. So I'm so grateful for your work putting it together and all of you for getting it. The wheels moving with the town so that hopefully, in my opinion, if the town does the right thing at town meeting and votes this thing in, it's just better fiscal policy anyway. So thank you.
I think it's, it's just wonderful for the town. It enables you to, if all of this passes, you're able to stay at level service. It's going to be really tough to stay at level service if you had to go under the 3.5 without this stabilization fund.
And I think it's really important, when we think about the special education cost for the out-of-district, these are move-ins, and so when they move in and they already are in an out-of-district placement, then we're assuming that cost. And Mr. Michaelazek can kind of speak to the numbers, but it, it really speaks to our programs that we have in Foxborough, the number of students that move in that are on IEPs and that we're able to provide programming for them within the district. That's a large number of students that have moved in, even in the last year on IEPs. He can speak to that. And then as far as the out-of-district placements, the numbers too. I think it's important to differentiate how many of those are move-ins versus what we're programming for within the district.
So, good evening. As it relates to out-of-district, as Dr. Burdos said, of our seven students that are going to increase our census, if you will, for our district placements, five of them are students that had moved into this district, right? So when they attended collaborative school, it's automatically the shift in cost goes right to the district that's receiving district, right? So it's transportation, that's tuition, that's any other contracted services that the student requires as part of their IEP. Part of that is students that attend residential and/or private day schools, Chapter 766 schools. There's something called the move-in law, and so if families move in after April 1st, so for example, this April 1st of 2025, if a student were to move in that attended a private school after that date, then that district would take over, well, not take over, but continue with their fiscal responsibility. As a district, we're programmatically responsible, so our district coordinator coordinates meetings, evaluations, all things that come along with programmatic responsibilities.
Sure.
But that district is paying until July 1st. So some of the students of the five that I just mentioned, of the seven students, some of them, that, that district right now is funding that placement, come July 1st, now Foxborough is going to fund it.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
And to your point as well, Dr. Burdos, this is actually an interesting year. Every year, we get students on IEPs that move into the district across all levels. In years past, it's been about a dozen to about 15 students, and just my own data kind of, kind of research in years past, we are well above that, and we're only in January, right? So right now, where we are, we have about 34 students that moved into this district from September 3rd, first day of school, to where we are now, that have IEPs. Half of them require substantially separate or partial inclusion specialized programming.
Right.
And so as part of those IEPs are extensive services, right? So whether it be any therapy type of services, any contracted services that we're now responsible for. For example, we've had students that move in that might have orientation mobility services. We don't have anybody on staff in our current large special ed department. We don't have any orientation mobility specialists, because we don't have the cohort of students to be able to, to support an FTE for that. So we contract out with our local collaborative to provide those services.
Sure.
That's a cost to the district, right? So although we have students that move in out-of-district that have out-of-district placements, we also receive students that move in all year that also require a financial obligation on our end.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate the background. Thank you. I actually never, I never understood how the, the timing works.
Yeah. April 1st.
Anything else?
All right. Do we have any questions or comments on the proposed budget information?
So we're waiting to hear who our liaison is from AdCom, and then we will end up meeting with AdCom to have meetings with them to go over this in detail, and then begin with our Budget Subcommittee. And then we will have a special school committee meeting coming up in the next week. I forget the exact.
22nd.
22nd. Which is just a budget workshop as far as going through the funding and how that works from a foundation, when we think about a foundation budget, when we think about net school spending, and just like how the interactions of that is. And other than that, we'll come back at the next school committee meeting with the recommended budget, which this is the number that we're recommending at this time. Again, we're very thankful to the town and seeing that we are projecting what our exact needs are, to be able to continue with the excellent education that we have here, and to be able to come with that 3.5 when they had said originally at the 3.0%.
Right.
And that they are going to set up, and again, town meeting, important, have people at town meeting for that special education reserve, but the vote would take place at the next school committee meeting.
Okay. All right.
And any other information that you are requesting between now or the Budget Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Just let us know.
All right. Thank you, Karen, for all your work in putting in this budget and figuring this out. I really appreciate everything you've done to make this whole thing work, because I know it's been a lot. It's a lot to walk into, and thank you, Corey, for all your hard work, and I know you've been working for years to, you know.
Yeah.
To do your best. This has been a rough year.
Yeah.
All around. I really appreciate your work on this.
Probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you to the Subcommittee for the work that you guys did to, you know, also ask a ton of questions, data requests and things like that. So thank you all for doing that, too, Michelle.
Up next, we have the discussion of the Fiscal Year 26 Capital Improvement Plan with Dr. Burdos, Ms. Sheridan, and Director of Technology, Mr. Aaron Hyer.
So based on the Capital Improvement Plan, this is a five-year look, and it's important to see some of the things that are coming out in the next number of years. It does not mean that some of these things that are here, as you'll hear particularly in the area of technology, that they are not needs in the immediacy. They are. But at the same time, we recognize with where we are with the town and with budget and are having to really prioritize an FY26, what are the needs that are the absolute needs at this point in time? So you're going to see things that you've seen in the past, which are things such as school buses, copy machines, and technology, again, we'll get specifically into that. But these are the things that if we don't continue to fund annually, you're not, you're going to get behind and you're not going to be able to catch up. So I'll turn it over to Karen, and then when we get to the technology piece, we're going to have a little bit more of the backup to explain what the real needs are and where we are currently with the ask.
Okay, so we're going to start with transportation. So the district operates its own bus service, replaces buses based on a 10-year or $100,000, 100,000 rotation miles, whichever occurs first. We operate 23 77-passenger buses and six 35-passenger minibuses. So the capital plan that you see right here, we had discussions with the transportation manager as well as the mechanic that works on the buses. So we went over not only the miles, how old the buses were, and if the mechanic felt like some of the buses really were a pain and needed to be replaced to come up with this plan. So for FY26, normally in your history, you've been purchasing, it appears to be like two of the 77 and one of the minibuses, but for FY26, we feel that we can, we only would need two of the 77-passenger buses, and we really don't feel like we need a minibus at this time. We just purchased one, so we feel like we can wait till next year for the minibus, but we do need the two 77-passenger buses. On year two, FY27 to FY30, we're going to need the two 77-passenger buses for each year. That's going to be consistent with what we need to do with those. But the 35-passenger minibuses for FY27, we're going to need one of just the regular minibus. In FY28, we're going to need a wheelchair minibus. So that's a different one than the 27 with a little bit higher cost. And then FY29 and FY30, we're back to just one of the 35-passenger minibus. We did add a little bit in each of the year for inflation to see, because the buses just continue to rise. So that's an estimate on going with the team, which like indicated is the mechanic and the transportation manager, and they were in approval of this capital plan for the next five years. So that's the transportation. The copy machines, the school maintains copy machines in all five buildings for use by office staff and teachers, and they typically, the copy machines typically last about three to four years. So each year, the town has been adding $40,000 for copy machines each year. I kept with that same $40,000 for the next five years. However, I do have that representative that's going to come in, and I was, this is new to Aaron, even though he's going to be in on the meetings, that he's going to be coming in. I haven't set up the meeting yet, Aaron, so, but, and we're going to have a discussion on the needs and do a little bit of cost analysis on, is it better to keep going forward with purchasing them every year? Or would it be more advantageous to lease them? I did speak to the town, and even if you lease them, you could still keep them on your capital plan. So just really do your due diligence and make sure that we're still going with that approach that is in the best interest of the town.
Look at it fresh.
So we're going to be going with that, and I was planning on calling. And I was planning on calling Aaron to, we haven't set up that meeting, but I did ask him if we could set one up in the very near future to go over that. The next slide is going to be technology, which I'm going to let Aaron speak to, and then I'll come back on some of the other asks that the principals have asked for.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, excuse me, good evening. So, our system-wide technology capital budgeting program's been in place prior to me coming on board in 2014, so my experience goes back at least 10 years. I think we've done a really good job over that time period in terms of making really incremental or small increases to that budget, going from $150,000 to $200,000 to $250,000. During 2020, 2021, 2022, you know, there was an influx of federal funds into the district, which helps support the purchase of a number of technology, and support a number of, implementation of a number of technology programs. So, one significant program being our one-to-one computing program, where all students and all teachers receive laptops. So, in that year, there was a reduction in the technology plan, right? Because we had these federal funds that had come in and had just purchased laptops for teachers and students. Over the last three years, we've done a good job, again, in terms of looking what our technology program looks like, looking at what our student needs are and teacher needs, and being very careful about how we move forward. This past year, we were able to purchase laptops for all of our teachers. These laptops were higher-powered laptops than the laptops that we bought during COVID, which were meant to be as a supplement device to their desktop or their classroom computers. In this last round of purchasing, the laptops that teachers received were purchased to replace desktop computers. Two, as part of our one-to-one program, we also shifted to the Office 365 cloud. And with that, you know, the computing environment became more ubiquitous with mobile computing, right, with using laptops. Another significant change we've made over the last year was we started to replace and refresh interactive projectors with interactive display panels. This is, you know, seeing the impact of this, it's been truly remarkable, actually. I wasn't quite sure how significant it would be. It's going from, you know, an interactive display panel to an interactive touch, but the devices are just so much more intuitive. Seeing the use of these devices in classrooms where the interactive functionality wasn't maybe used as much as we like to see it, you know, skyrocketing. So, with that said, just being really careful, we're not just continuing to buy things and replace things that we have, because that's the way we've always done it, but being really careful about, intentional about what the program looks like and then what the needs are in terms of devices for both staff and for students, and that's both in the classroom and then also administratively as well. But with that said, we're now in the first, we're coming into the second actual year where the district is funding the refresh of student and teacher laptops. So, teachers were done last year. To keep this program current, it's really important that we replace about one grade level per grade man per year. So, this is approximately between 550 to 650 laptops, you know, per year for students. Like I said, we just did replace all teacher laptops this past year. So, you do see an increase in projections for FY 2029, and that's to account for that the teacher laptops will need to be refreshed again in FY '29.
The jump between '26 and '27, that's the part you were just noting about us assuming, us assuming that liability.
Yeah, so in '26 and '27, so we were able to kind of maximize some of our procurement that we did in this past fiscal year too. So, when we're procuring laptops, we're almost a little bit behind as we go, right? Because the capital plan will fund, the money becomes available in July, but there's not enough time to, in July, to buy the laptops and get them distributed for students. So, this year, in this past year, we were able to do a little bit better in terms of our procurement than we anticipated.
Sure.
So, we're not going to need to buy as many laptops this year to keep up, but in the next fiscal year, FY '27, we will need to buy those laptops, yeah.
Okay.
Now, there's also talks about price increases right now. We're hearing from a lot of manufacturers right now that they're anticipating, you know, price increases in the next quarter, potentially due to tariffs. So, you know, we watch that carefully. You know, we have made changes, you know, in terms of vendors and manufacturers.
Yeah.
In the past, we've had to do that, you know? So, sometimes there is some cost, you know, increases that may impact us, but we've generally been able to do pretty good.
The student computers you buy, you buy similar ones each year, or do you buy, like, slightly upgrades from?
Yes, we've actually learned a lot since we've implemented the program. So, when we first implemented the program, we were buying Lenovo tablet convertible-type devices with very, with Gorilla Glass, for instance, for screens and things like that. What we learned was a couple of things. The screens are nice, but two, the Gorilla Glass is glass, so when it breaks, it's quite sharp.
Yeah.
And that was, what we learned from that is it could be a safety concern. But two, the cost of replacement for the screens, which tend to be one of the most common accidentally damaged items on laptops, are very expensive. You know, so since we implemented the program, we've actually gone to a non-touchscreen. It's a vinyl overlay, so there's no glass, there's no sharp materials if it breaks. It seems to be a little more durable. And it costs about $45 if it breaks, where before, we were seeing costs at their highest around $300 just for the screen component of the laptop. So, in terms of, two, making these kind of, these changes, there's a lot of thought put into it in terms of the sustainability of the program. You know, that was going to be very difficult to sustain if we were having to replace these screens at such a high cost. Eventually, the cost came down to around $110. It's actually where the cost of screens had started, but they had gone up throughout COVID, and then they had come down back to about $110. But the new screens cost about anywhere between $40 and $60, depending on the model, if they break. But by going with a non-touch device, we're able to get machines with better processors and more memory, and that's where we've really seen the need.
Oh, that's worth it.
Yeah.
I think. I don't see the advantage over a touchscreen for that.
You know, and the touchscreens can, are nice, and we do order some machines with touchscreen typically, like for some of our youngest learners, right? In terms of their, you know, dexterity and fine movement and things like that.
Yeah, makes sense, yes.
And some of the software we're using with them. So, we're still buying some touch devices. But what we found is that having a computer with more memory and having a better processor and a better battery, that that's more in line with the instructional program, the software that we're wanting to use with students in classes, that they're more capable. Yeah, so, again, a little bit of value engineering. And the other thing we've started to do is, with the latest equipment we've procured, is we're getting a four-year manufacturer's warranty with them.
Great.
The manufacturer's providing us with seed parts, so they're giving us 10% replacement parts upfront. So, if we buy 400 computers, they're giving us 40 screens that we can keep on the shelf. They're giving us 40 motherboards, cases, keyboards, those types of components, access to those components, so that we can turn around those repairs very quickly as well. So, but the other piece to know is, in 2014, when we really started the, you know, when I started here anyway, in terms of the capital plan, the amount of technology we had is a fraction of what we have now. You know, we've always had lots of, you know, computers, but since 2014, you know, we've added like a central telephone system that we support. We've added card access and security. We've added so many additional systems in addition to just the computers and the network switching and firewalls and those things that we're supporting. We've managed to continue to support all that equipment through capital projects, but generally maintaining it or moving it forward through the use of these funds, right? So, there's a lot more being supported, you know, for the funds. So, when you see the number go up, you know, it does, it does seem significant.
Right.
But again, a lot of that, you know, prior to 2020, with the receipt of, you know, all the extra federal funding that was available for transition to remote learning, we were having this conversation about raising this number, you know, and then the receipt of those funds really kind of, you know, delayed this more significant increase.
I appreciate that.
No, that sounds great. I feel like since the district has gone one-to-one, I think it's great, but I feel like you've been in the fire since then, like, nonstop with these, I don't know how you keep up with it, but thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, this is, the changes we've made this year in terms of, you know, teachers having their own laptops, you know, the new laptops starting to come in for students, the interactive displays, the cost of the interactive displays have come down significantly as the technology has been on the market and available for a little bit longer. The cost of the installation is less, you know, and we're, we are behind in the projector replacement area, so that is, we're really excited to be able to move that forward to, so we're trying to do about between 10 and 20% of the displays that we have per year until we catch up. We anticipate that we'll continue about, you know, 10% a year. We're hoping to get about 10 years out of them, so.
Well, by the time you get all those screens in, they're going to become obsolete and you're going to have to start all over again.
No.
Because I remember when the smart boards were like, you know, were the, you know, back when, and we were like, oh, they're great. Now, here we are, we're replacing them. It moves too fast. But, thank you.
And so much of that went back, way back to the Faces Grants when we started some of the implementation of those things.
Jeez Louise, yeah.
I think, I just remember back to when I, when I came here in 2014, right? It's like, it was a pretty big accomplishment. We had just, the district had just finished installing, completing the rollout of interactive boards and projectors, and it was like, and also to wireless connectivity, and it was like, check, we're done. And.
Problem solved.
Yeah, problem solved.
Forever.
So, here we are 10 years later, right? And we've been replacing the equipment as we go, but it's really an ongoing expense.
How's the feedback been on the, with the teacher laptops, at least the models that you've gone with?
I think it's been pretty positive. You know, we did a, we were able to procure them and get them distributed right at the end of the school year, so teachers had them over the summer.
Sure.
And the feedback has been pretty good. I think, you know, again, it's a good match for where we are in terms of our teaching and learning, the interactive boards, the laptops, you know, the full implementation of Office. It's been pretty positive. I think there was people nervous, right, going into the school year and it's changed, but I think it's overwhelmingly positive.
Remember, what are we using?
For laptops?
Yeah, for faculty and staff.
So, the faculty laptops are, the manufacturer's is an Acer brand laptop. They're 14-inch screens, they have 16 gigs of RAM, so they're pretty good. And we're expecting to get, you know, a full four years, four to five years of life out of them, so. And we've done pretty good with the procurement. So, Acer, they primarily manufacture in Taiwan. You know, so during COVID, when there were some embargoes, we started working with them a little bit, because they weren't having some of the same manufacturing problems that some of the other manufacturers were having. So, they've been actually very reliable.
Good, good. All right, do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Hyer?
None further, sorry for jumping in.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you for your forethought, always.
So, then we're going to move on to some other equipment requests and some major repairs. So, with the FY '26 budget, we did gather input from the administrative team and the principals. So, some of these are the requests that the principals have asked for. So, for FY '26, Ahern Middle School is requesting a library refresh. That's new furniture, and that's $30,000 in FY '26. Also, Ahern Middle School, a music lab refresh with new musical equipment. That's $22,000 in FY '26. The high school is requesting classroom furniture, chairs and desks, which we have spread over three years for FY '27, '28, '29, with $30,000 in '27, $26,000 in '28, and $26,000 in '29. So, spread that one out a little bit. The high school is also requesting a van, a 10, 12- to 15-passenger van, that they would like to use for field trips and small athletic trips. That one is in FY '27, estimated cost on that one is $65,000. Moving on to some major repairs, so Ahern Middle School is requesting some new carpeting for the areas of the library, the library classroom, Class 243, and the main offices, five offices in the large open area, as well as the guidance office with three offices, the open lobby area and two hallways. That estimated as about $60,000, and we have that in the FY '26 request. The high school is requesting to build a locker room behind their weight room for football. It is now in IGO. They would like to move it out of IGO. They also would like to up.
Would like to move it out of IGO.
IGO would like it out of IGO.
IGO would like to move it out of IGO. And that is also an update of the men's and women's locker room. For those who really want it out of IGO, you're going to have to wait a little bit, because that is moving, is we have an FY fiscal year '30, because that's kind of a heavy hit. We figured we need a couple of years for people to get used to this one. So, that is $2,500,000. The high school is also requesting a section of, another section of away and a third section of the bleachers on the turf field. That is in fiscal year '28, and that estimate is about $435,000. The high school also would like a replacement interior doors and hardware for the boys' and girls' gymnasiums, and that is in FY '27 for $28,000. And finally, the high school is in need of replacing the turf on the field, and that is, I believe, it's a little getting near almost overdue on that one.
It's overdue at this point, but they've done such an excellent job of keeping it up that we've been able.
You knew that was coming.
Yes, so we've been able to.
You knew that was coming.
Maintain it, yes.
What's the life of a turf field?
10 years.
Okay.
How long have we had ours?
We're like 12, I think.
12.
So, that one is in FY '27, and that's going to be about $900,000. The final thing is the Taylor School. Again, we're going to go out for the Taylor School, and the estimate on this, I'd like to thank Bill Yugner for his expertise in helping me with these estimates, full disclosure on that one. And the Taylor School for FY '26, it's about $1 million for FY '26. And then for FY '27, it would be $45 million for the tele-school renovation with an estimate of $20,000 for the MSBA reimbursement. So, for '27, it's about $25 million. So, that's the five-year capital plan that we're bringing forward. I'm not sure, is that a vote on this tonight, or is that the next meeting?
Sorry. And when we vote, are we voting on the full five years or just FY '26, FY '26?
It's FY '26.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And then fortunately, with the Taylor, with the statement of interest that we submitted, we had hoped third time was the charm, and, because that's what had happened with the BRRRR, and it was just under a million when we had the feasibility study. So, that's why you see if we were to get through the statement of interest, that dollar figure would be for the feasibility study. We will submit, again, that opens up in the next week, and it's due in April. We are going to put it in a fourth time and hope that it does it the fourth time in this case.
When, when would we estimate we would hear back?
Not until December.
Okay, so not before?
No.
Not before town meeting?
And they came out, MSBA came out not this fall, but last fall for a visit, and it just, they have a certain amount of funding.
Yeah.
And based on the schools that they go to, they spread that across elementary, middle school, and high school, and it's the buildings across the state that are most in need. You know, we participated in that post-occupancy visit. You know, we participated in that post occupancy visit with the borough in the fall. And the report that we got back was really favorable to everything that we've done. But at the same time, it was comments to already outgrowing based on spaces at the borough. So we're going to leverage that report as we submit the new statement of interest, really focus on the curriculum, teaching and learning spaces. We've done that before, but we feel as though that it's working against us with us maintaining and doing such a great job with the facilities and taking care of our buildings. We're being penalized for that is the way that we feel. So we're going to again, focus on that, but really look towards more emphasis on the teaching and learning spaces because it's just not conducive to sound educational environment.
The gym outside the classroom door now, now?
That, that's not.
Doesn't work?
No.
Oh, odd.
And the, the crazy part of that is there's other schools within the state that have that same floor plan. When I first started teaching, I had the exact same floor plan in the South Shore District.
Probably a good idea on paper at some point. Can I ask, related to that, the million? That's, do we believe the feasibility study, that's for the million? That that will help us cross the line with the MSBA? Or is that's just next step, we got to do it anyway?
I believe that's what you have to do. You have to do the feasibility study first before you start the next process.
Meaning knowing that we have the funding available to do that? Is that, is that?
Yes.
I, I think that that's always helpful. They know that we are primed and ready, but that's going to be the same comment that we're saying. We've let them know that we've, you know, had the support of the town on this for the last number of years. It goes to level of need.
Yeah, and that's, okay, then fine. Because that's, and what I'm just verifying, that's, that's necessary money in for the next steps.
Yes.
Regardless.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think you, if you're approved, you would need it before the next capital, the following year. That's why it's on.
We would need to have it done.
Before, right, before the next year's capital, FY27.
Fine.
So that's why it's on for this year. If you get approved.
I, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for the context, that was needed. That's all I have.
So if there's other information or with the budget subcommittee, any other additional information that's needed in regards to these requests for capital, just let us know. We're happy to provide any of that information.
Context, can I ask, just a context question? And this is more just refreshing my memory on the capital process. We're working up these requests now and refining them and all that. Is, are you all at the stage while doing this that you're hearing what the other departments' needs are as well in town? Or is it once, that once this is together, then you get to hear your meaning? Because I know all the departments in town like to coordinate this stuff because we're asking the same folks for money.
No, and that's, I guess that's the beautiful thing that we've gone out and we're going out a fourth time, that it has been that conversation and knowing that that's the, the need there and the town supports that.
And that's not a surprise to anybody.
No, it's not a surprise at all.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all I had.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Further budget update. So next on the agenda is the 2025, 2026 draft of the school calendar.
Great, so the draft that you have before you and years past, many times we've had a couple of different versions and we've had that for discussion. Tonight's purpose is just to share with you this version for you to be able to gather any information from your constituents that you might have. We have also with the Education Association, FEA, they also have this. They're discussing it with their membership and we'll continue to have conversations with them. It'll be a vote at the next meeting on this calendar. But it is a typical calendar for us where students start after Labor Day. And then with your typical days that we have, professional development this year, because of the election every four years, we have it in November. This takes the professional development day back into October, which is prior to the Indigenous Peoples' Holiday Weekend. And then if we look forward to the last day of school would be June 17th. And then by state law, we have to build in the five cancellation days. And so those are marked on the calendar. If we were to have that, then the last day would be June 26th. And with Juneteenth now in the last couple of years, that would move that out. But we'll hope that we don't have those cancellation days and have to, to move out that far. But by state law, we have to put that there.
Okay, and you don't know when the seniors' last day would be for this calendar?
No, we don't, we don't have that on there now because we're still in conversation and we just need to get that from Dr. Donovan. We know that we need to be able to have, even with graduation, 10 days out. So I just, we didn't want to be premature and put the date there without having the conversation with him.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the calendar?
Will we get the seniors' last day before we vote?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
But as a reminder from last year, from the tiered focus monitoring review we had with the Department of Education, the seniors' last day cannot be 12 school days before our last day of school.
Right.
So it has to be 12 days, not more.
Yeah, 12 days max.
Maximum, thank you.
I do like this calendar. It's tricky with Christmas being in the middle of the week like that. So am I reading this correctly, the 23rd would be the half day?
Yes.
I actually like that because then you're not coming back on that weird day on the first, like that Friday. I like the way that's built out. I appreciate that.
And I, and I know Jamie, she speaks with other districts too, with her Jabba-like group, just to kind of get an idea across the state, what people are looking at with when the calendar falls that way. And this is in line with, and I know with my colleagues too, with other districts. And, and that's helpful, particularly if you have people that, that are teachers in other districts. If, if you have calendars that are kind of aligned when it comes to the holidays, that's helpful for families to, for planning.
All right, thank you. Up next, we have the first reading of policies. So our policy subcommittee, which is Mr. Brent Ruder and Mr. Nathan Erman, they have been working hard to go through all the current school committee policies. And that is no small feat. Everybody here is very appreciative of your work. So we are ready to hear the first readings of these policies.
Thank you. No, and thank you to everyone in admin and Jamie for putting up with us and helping us with the minutes. And Karen Sheridan, thank you for your advice on the, because we're, we're starting with, given that it's budget season, we're starting with Section D, at least for the ones we wanted to put forward first for revision, which is the financial stuff. And the theme in, this is the first batch from that where there are edits. The theme in the edits, although Nathan or I will speak to the specific policy, but across it all, it's all of the revisions that Sheridan has suggested and Nate and I have vetted and looked at through other districts and MASC and the like, is really just to have a more accurate reflection of what we actually do or why we do it. And in a couple of cases, it's small stuff like updating legal references and stuff. So with that, I think we're going to alternate. All right. So the way the policy stuff goes, and somebody correct me when I say something wrong, is we do a first reading on the first night and this is reading it into the public record, have discussion, right? And then any revisions that come from that discussion would be reflected in our next meeting for a second reading, at which point we would be free to vote it up or down or extend it for yet another reading. Did I get that about right? Okay, so this is the first reading. We do have to read the whole thing, including the legal references into, into the record. So file DBG, and this is the file number that all districts use across the state for something called budget adoption procedures. The district budget is adopted by school committee at the cost center level. Cost centers should represent appropriate levels of transparency for the committee to oversee goal implementation while allowing for administrative day-to-day work. Cost centers will be agreed upon by the committee and administration. All revenue sources are subject to adoption by the school committee. The budget is adopted by a simple majority. Authority for the adoption of the final school committee budget's bottom line lies with the citizens who comprise and who are entitled to vote at town meeting. The school budget is presented as part of the total town budget for action at the annual town meeting. And then we added in source MASC, legal refs, mass general laws 7134, and adding 7137, town charter, see local reference. And then we, so yeah, this, this one adds two paragraphs, a few legal references, just to be more reflective of what we actually do. The original policy was just the last two sentences that I read, very short. Any questions?
No, I am not a legal person, so I don't have a, Karen thinks it's okay?
Yeah, I went through them all.
All right.
And we together gave, looked at some notes that I had and looking at the MASC policy. And so yes, all of the ones tonight I have already looked at and reviewed with them.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll read the next policy, file DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority. In keeping with the need for periodic reconciliation of the school's department budget, the Foxborough School Committee will consider requests for transfer funds as they are recommended by the superintendent. The Foxborough School Committee wishes to be kept abreast of the need for these adjustments so that it may act promptly and expedite financial record-keeping for the school system. Any transfer requests above $25,000 between cost centers, as approved during the annual budget deliberations, must be submitted to the school committee for approval as part of the school business officers' quarterly report during the business meetings of the school committee. Transfers below $25,000 are approved by the superintendent and the school business administrator with reports provided on a quarterly basis. All funds in the general account not expended by the close of fiscal year will be returned to the town. Source MASC, legal references, mass general law, chapter 71, section 37. And we basically just added the procedures that this particular committee reaffirmed in the fall.
Okay, so it's something we already did, it's just now it's in writing.
Now it's reflected in our policy, would be if we voted for it, reflected in our policy.
Correct.
Next, this one's short, file DH, bonded employees and officers. Each employee of the school system who is assigned the responsibility of receiving and dispensing, dispensing school funds will be bonded individually or covered by a blanket bond. The town will pay the cost of the bond. Legal references, mass general laws, 40 subsection 5, 41 subsection 109A, 71 subsection 47. And this adds three legal references that weren't there before, just we weren't citing the right laws.
Next, we have filed DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting. The superintendent will ultimately, will be ultimately responsible for receiving and properly accounting for all funds of the school district, maintaining effective internal control so as to assure the effectiveness and efficiency of operations at code safeguarding of property, assurance of expenditures in accordance with programs under which revenues are received and compliance with applicable laws and regulations. The accounting system used will conform with state requirements and with good accounting practices, providing for the appropriate separation of accounts, funds and special monies. The Foxborough School Committee will receive periodic financial statements from the superintendent showing the financial condition of the school department. Such other financial statements, as may be determined necessary by either the Foxborough School Committee or the administration, will be presented as needed. Source MASC, legal reference, mass general law, chapter 44, section 38, 603 CMR 10, and 2 CFR 200.303. And we basically were just adding rationale for what's already going on.
All right, last one for tonight. File DJ, Purchasing. It shall be the responsibility of the superintendent, and then this is a bulleted list, to provide materials, supplies, equipment, services at the lowest possible cost consistent with the quality necessary for proper operation of the district, thereby attaining the maximum value for each public dollar spent. To maintain the district's reputation for fairness and integrity and to promote impartial and equal treatment of all who wish to conduct business with the district. To encourage a mutually cooperative relationship with requesting departments, recognizing that successful purchasing is a result of team planning and effort to promote social and economic goals such as encouraging local small, local small minority and women-owned businesses to participate in bidding for district purchases. The acquisition of materials, equipment and services will be centralized in the superintendent's office of the school system. The super, the superintendent will serve as purchasing agent. He, she will develop and administer the purchasing program for the schools in keeping with legal requirements and with adopted school budget. School purchases will be made only on official purchase orders approved for issuance by the appropriate unit head and signed by the superintendent or designee, with such exceptions as may be made by the latter for emergency purchases. Source MASC, legal references, mass general laws, 7, section 22A, 7, section 22B, 30B, and 71, section 49A. The parts that were added to this was those just reflecting what we and other districts already do, which is the responsibilities of the superintendent and designee. So it's really just adding a level of clarity for that, we thought. And thank you, Karen. For your advocacy. And that's all we have for tonight for first readings.
All right, great, thank you very much. Up next, we have acceptance of two donations. Our first donation is the acceptance of the Meditech donation that I believe Dr. Rose will speak on.
Sure, so this is an annual donation that we've been receiving for some time. We're, we're very grateful for Meditech's support. One thing of note this year is they've increased their donation amount from the usual $15,000 to $20,000. So we're really grateful for that increase. We typically use these funds to fund STEM-related projects. We've used it to offset the cost of Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way, as you know, has some startup grants that allow us to kickstart those programs. And then over time, those grants decrease and, and we've been able to leverage these Meditech funds in order to be able to sustain those programs. In addition, Meditech funds this year are actually being used to fund a high school robotics club, which is not something that we've had in place for a long time. So we're, we're really grateful to have that flexibility and be able to focus on improving STEM opportunities for our students across the district.
Great, thank you.
I move that we accept the generous donation of $20,000 to support STEM activities in the district from Meditech with much gratitude. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept from Mr. Ruder and a second from Mr. Erman. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All against? We accept 300. And our second donation is from the estate of Raymond McKenna, which Karen will speak on.
So I'll read the letter that we got from the lawyer for the estate of Raymond McKenna. So Raymond McKenna passed away earlier this year. He named the Foxborough High School Drama and Music Department as beneficiaries. So enclosed there was a check for $711.30 for the drama department, $711.29 for the music department. And that's for the high school. So thank you very much to the estate of Raymond McKenna.
I move that we accept the generous donation from Raymond McKenna's estate in the amounts of $711.30 for the drama department and $711.29, uh, dollars and 29 cents for the music department with much gratitude.
Second.
And we have a motion to accept from Mr. Ruder and a second from Mr. Erman. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All against? Approved 300. Thank you, and thank you very much for those donations. Next, we have community updates. Does anybody here have any community updates? All right, I do not have any community updates either. So this is a time where we would adjourn.
So you want to hang out? No, I'm sorry, I move to adjourn. Second.
Mr. Ruder makes a motion, Mr. Erman seconds. All in favor?
Sure.
All against? 300. Being adjourned, thank you very much.